I'd like to call to order the planning and commission meeting for March first, two thousand and twenty-three roll call.
All right, here.
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 One, two. Mattson.
Here.
Riker.
Here.
Sandy. Boson.
Here.
Corcoran.
All right, reading and approval of the minutes from the February first meeting, Mr. Iker move approval moved by Mr. Iker, second by Mr. Budkey. Any further discussions? Seeing no hands, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Meetings are approved as submitted. Public hearings filed approvals petition and minor changes.
Free one ordinance amendment zoning them resoning in twenty hundred South Columbia Road, state on P D amendment number two.
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can you accuse myself on this one again? So moved.
So moved, second. Anybody, any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Ben, you are accused. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Brooks.
Okay, thank you. So this is, we talked about this last time. It's the Macy's property out at the Columbia Mall. It's essentially the south facing department store at that location, anchor store, I should say, area and Riverside Christian is looking to purchase and relocate their school there. They'll do lots of modifications on the inside. Some of the attachments that we have, they're the same as last time, but they're looking at doing some green space. As you look at those front doors, looking north for the south facing part of the building, they got the playground that would be to the left and then the potential playing field, I'll say to the, to the right. And that isn't a regulation football size, but it's very close to it, just to give you some scale. They're taking out parking, which is more than adequate parking that they would still have on site and would actually green it up and actually provide a little less on the stormwater through that area in terms of some things that would actually get taken care of. We didn't modify anything else in terms of openings and in some of those other things yet, but we will look and as we work through that site plan, kind of focus where those openings would be along that south face, the south face as it intersects with the ring road. They do have representatives here. Ben potentially could speak for them or they have some other folks here as well. The one comment that called up, we did receive from G K themselves, their concern was only that they wanted to make sure that this zone was really contingent on Riverside going there. They didn't want to, if this deal falls through, then some other school that they haven't had discussions with would come in. So that was the only, that was the only concern that we heard. We did check some of the questions that come up were, would this affect liquor license for others in the area? That's always a consideration anytime city council takes a look at liquor license, but there is no requirement that's be so far from any location. So ground round could still locate where they are. I think there's others in that strip mall could still be where they are. The food court that's in the, the Columbia Mall could still have liquor license, like if an establishment went there and beer, wine type license that could still occur. City council would still evaluate that separately, period. And good, this wouldn't affect somebody from getting one. I'll just state it that way directly. So with that, I can certainly answer anything else that you may have with the wood. Other conditions on there. We did talk last time, the fencing that they have is really meant to screen along that west side. So the playground is fenced and protected. And then the ball fields as well. So they, they're, they're working on protecting those areas where potentially kids would be all playing in traffic. In terms of the timing, when the school would be busiest would not be when the ball, the mall itself is busy. So they would be attracting their highest use would be at times when the mall is not. So weekends and nights are typically the busiest for the mall. Traditional, I should say. Shields is probably the biggest attractor to date, and this ring road in the main area probably is not being, doesn't come across that mall. I think most people use that South Thirty First Street, which is between Olive Garden and Texas Roadhouse. That's probably that main entrance off of thirty-second. And then the restaurants are probably busiest, as I said, probably more evening, potentially during lunch.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, if that'll stand for any questions, like I said, there are some others, and this is a public hearing as well.
Mr. Iker.
Screening and fencing, what are requirements in a B two? Or a R M S P.
In this V U D, there wouldn't be any requirements. So this would be something that if there is specific sites, any height recommendations, we would put them in at this point, but just the school going there, there wouldn't be any code, you know, this is what has, you know, this has to be a, you know, four foot fence here or anything like that. There would be no requirements in code for that. This would just be.
Right, right.
We could write this in, yes.
Exactly, you do, like we're gonna have requirements that any playground area have.
Minimum four foot.
Fences or trees or something, right?
Correct.
Anymore, any other questions? I don't, we got all the caring, but you know, I figured I want to get whatever we got out a little bit to get started. I know it's kind of controversial deal, so we had talked about entrances and you said those aren't ready yet. I guess exactly where they're going to be might, might or might not make a difference. Just some of the things we brought up last month, I guess.
I would just want those lined up with the entrances. Why didn't ask them to change their drawing at this point? Sure. But the only thing I would, we'd want to have those focused at least across from some of those main entrance points, the strip mall where the old Chi Chi's, I'll say. Noodles and Company and that area, there's quite a few openings there, so they haven't focused those entrances. So it'd be very difficult. The McDonald's one will be really easy to go get across from so that there isn't, hey, I'm making a left and a right. And if we get those lined up, you reduce some of those conflicts where you end up with some, some problems where somebody's making a quick left and somebody was making a right and didn't see that person. So those are some of the things that we do worry about. So we try to line those up.
I think that's going to be important because one of the biggest concerns is safety, of course. Honestly, with kids at Red River, I know a lot of them over here McDonald's and noodles and whatever else. So there's a lot of traffic daily in that area. That's how I know it's been a big concern of this. And then yeah.
I don't know if it's going to be an open campus or if they're going to be doing food on their own.
That might be a change back and forth daily as or yearly as they go. Any other questions for open public hearing? Seeing none, all open the public hearing, anybody in the audience like to step up and address this item, please do so at this time. Yeah. We can, we can speak to.
Let's state our name and the association address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Paul Hensford. I'm treasurer on the Riverside Christian School Board. I live at sixty-three fifty Centerwood Drive here in Ground Force.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm part of this project. We've talked to Ryan Scott Johnson, president of school boards with us here today to we don't have a lot of additional further comments beyond what Ryan had suggested. We want to be, be available for questions as that came up. Preliminary drawings and so there's things that we'll address and changes we need to, some of the questions regarding security is going to be one of the questions that has come up on traffic and that's something we're working with, we'll work with both the city and the architect for him on, on design on that for safety as best we can through that ring road. The, some other questions that we had heard, questions on were access to the mall. Our expectation is we'll close access to the mall for that entrance coming in, that would be shut down, we would expect, and we'll primarily have one entrance like most schools would have that would be available and during the day and that would be just locked and available, just like it is at the current school. So as far as safety and that's something that had come up to with maybe proximity to I twenty-nine, proximity to Shields, some of these other places. There'll be a closed campus in that sense where you're going to buzz through and the security through that process. So.
Yeah, I think it today is we're closing off the access to the mall is probably the best thing ever.
Yeah, and that's what I respect is shut that down and be a standalone campus as the best we can through that process. So the size building, the size footprint, we can maintain playgrounds and some green space there without having interfered at all with the mall.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Iker.
Yeah, so talk to me about, I have a big concern with buffer to buffer off your playground area and your sports area. You know, fencing trees, that sort of thing. What, what are your thoughts there? And then what's your timing? Because what you're talking about is all work with the city with the planning department, that sort of thing. But I feel pretty strongly, I'd like to have that in the zoning for, and so I wouldn't want to improve it until we know what that is. So talk to me about what your timing in as well. If we were to delay this, what would that, how would that impact your construction schedule?
Well, we respect fencing and also trees along all those perimeters on the southeast side where that football field is identified, or soccer field, green field. Also on the west side towards Shields, that direction, we would expect trees and also probably both trees and also some privacy screening there around the playground to again maintain more of a campus feel. And that's something as far as timing. It's going to be a function of city approving and zoning, also a function of documents with G K, making sure that's approved. So there's a number of things that happen, assuming all those things happen. Our hope would be that this summer, this fall, we'd be able to start construction and with a goal of our school is expanding at a pace that fall of two thousand and twenty-four, we would love to be able to have some element to be able to be in there. And, and my expectation, our expectation would be called the fifteen month construction project. And so that means that by this summer, you know, we'd have to look at that if, if it went that quickly.
Ryan, if we were to put in a requirement of just say a four foot fence and so many trees per linear foot or whatever. And then they came back and wanted that changed, would that still require two meetings?
I think if we if we put a buffer yard C, which is our normal today requirement between a B three and residential that would have a fence requirement. And I think I want to say six trees per hundred lineal feet. And I, I see Andrea and Haley both typing. Cause I'm sure I'm wrong, probably. That would, I think, get to a, a start of what we do. Typically, what we would say then is if, if there's, unless you basically absolutely said, no, it's got to be a buffer yard C, period, then then we, then we would come back and it would be a one meeting deal typically once through us, because then it's a, it's an amendment to the plan as opposed to a, a full on amendment to the concept. It would be amendment to the detailed development. As an option. If you gave us enough leeway, then we can, we can look at how we would group those as well.
The buffer yard C, the fence with two shade trees, four ornamentals and six shrubs. We try to stay away from the shrubs to get three main center. But we could, we've done modified buffer yards in the past where everyone to start there with the intent giving Ryan like approval with any modifications to be approved for Ryan in that administratively, which he thinks going, knowing the going, would be to have a stronger question.
So for sure fence.
For sure fence.
How we do those trees, yeah, two shades, four ornamentals. We, we usually work with them on what's best in terms of the trees because ornamentals versus shades versus, you know, sometimes they want to have something with screening and they may want that here. So if they would have put pines in there instead, that might be beneficial. So we do let the swapping of the trees occur a lot. So.
And you called that buffer yard, that's buffer yard B, C, but that's shrubs.
No, that two shade trees, ornamental trees, we're with that.
Okay. And is there a height requirement on the fence or anything like that?
We go to six five side of steering.
I mean.
Yeah, four feet doesn't seem tall enough.
Yeah.
Six, sixes.
I can't jump four feet.
Yeah.
So.
My guess is the balls coming out of the playground right on that ring road.
Oh, and the mom and me says somebody could jump that four foot fence and grab my kid and run real fast where.
Yeah, no, it's good. That's good.
I guess.
The side of steering is a little odd for playground. If you think of all the other school playgrounds, they're good chain link fences for that aspect. So we may want to change it to just a fence and let them follow their security protocol, how they wish, you know, to, to maybe let it be a chain link fence for that, you know, site motion. I might change it from a strict buffer yard C to that aspect.
I think the SEPTED folks would tell us that you don't, that this is the police piece that are on the malls and playgrounds. You don't want either places people can hide so that having a chain link is usually why you see.
Right, so.
We could ask for a non-site obscuring. Yeah, a buffer yard C, six foot fence minimum.
Yeah.
Non-site obscuring.
Non-site obscuring. And if, you know, if we want to pass this thing.
Yep.
I mean, just, this is a final, so we want to get it right. That's, that's my whole deal. You know, the only thing that bothers me or one of the things that bothers me is the what the owner said, that if it doesn't go to the Christian school, then it comes back. So, but it, it'll already be zoned on final. And so as we put a caveat in there that if these guys don't buy it, it goes immediately back to.
So that's the request. They're, they're requesting that. It, it's up to you guys whether you want it to.
Right, right. Hearing that, that is from the owner and unfortunately, these things once in a while can fall through and we get them back and we've already done something. So now we gotta retrace our steps and do it again. So I want to make sure that we all understand that, that it, how do we.
G K's neighbor, I'll, I'll state that. This parcel is separate. That's, it would be like, it, it, it's the request from the neighboring property. Cause G K doesn't own this piece.
Which piece do they own?
They own the main mall.
Yeah.
And J C Penney's, but they don't own this piece. They, they have.
A C zone.
It's a different capital group corporation.
Yeah.
But that still that, I guess the owner can do what he wants with his lot.
What, what, not to do this to you, but what's the sign situation at a school like this? In terms of, when we approve those, what are they allowed for a sign?
Well, they would be allowed, same thing that the other side, the other schools would be allowed, because in this P U D, we would follow the school requirements. That a B three is actually, they can do a lot more typically. Schools don't usually put too much money into their signs, but they can do, they'd be able to do what we just approved. Those are restricted because those are in residential neighborhoods. So.
What we approve for Central River.
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
They could follow the same path as that, yes, more.
Correct.
Cause they could do more in a B three.
Potentially, yeah. But you guys could limit it to the same signage if you wanted to. This one's going to be really odd though.
Yeah.
They're going to want something probably on thirty-second to.
They'll probably run a couple different, I mean.
Yeah.
Don't have more requirements.
Obviously once.
And, and a lot of these, so what we're asking for, a part of our purchase agreement was we need to get approval from both the city that we can get it rezoned and also from G K and the neighboring tenants, Shields, the transform code, who owns yours, and then G K. Because they'll have their own, they'll have signage requirements to as part of the operating agreement as well. So I mean, as, as we go through this, what we're asking for is enough certainty. So you, the tenant's already feels confident and also enough flexibility that it needs to be consistent with the operating agreement that's in place for all the mall owners as well. So there's going to be a couple of different caveats to it.
G, G K has a lot of wo- work to do with them because of that real estate agreement. I'll just state that. Ironically, and this is what I told other people, our process is much easier to get through probably than what they still have ahead of them through the real estate agreement. See, the first time you're going to hear government's the easiest.
Is there, are there any city provisions about how close a gun store can be to a school for shields?
I'm not aware of any, and that was, that has been brought up to me, but I'm not aware of any. There is Brother Arms, that's right downtown here. So ironically, that brother's arms might be closer to Central than this one is the Shields, yeah. I'm not aware of any requirements on that.
Just a lot of stuff coming up that probably should have been more addressed in the prelim. We're almost doing a prelim slash final, so you can go get approval on.
You know, well, and, and there still is a, a separate detailed development plan. They're really just trying to figure out too. I mean, we have to do this piece, but there, there's, like I said, there's a, there's a lot of hurdles still that they're still having to go through, but you know, is the concept good? That I know that they're going to be looking at safety, security. We'll certainly have that. We can certainly bring that back once we start getting site plan as well, you know, our detailed development plan in this case. When we start working that through, but I think their, their piece was is, yeah, what's that certainty? You know, and then it's how much work do I get to that? You know, there there are schools do at the same point, so they're trying to balance all that too. So that's, that's the tricky part here.
And security is going to be one of the, if not the most important thing that we're addressing, so not to we, we want provisions in place from the city, but that's going to be one of the, the most important things that we're going to be looking at, at for any school. But I have two children there right now, three children there now, probably have four children that are now. It's going to be a significant priority for, for not only me as a parent, also as a board member, but also for the other.
We're a private school, but you're also a business. I mean, you're not going to, if people don't feel safe, they're not going to send their kids there.
Right, absolutely. And on the flip side, we're, we're a business, but we're a nonprofit business. So as Ryan talked about, we're trying to balance all of the, the time and the cost associated with putting these site plans together, because if we come to the city, you're going to force them. You say, we're never going to approve this and we sunk a bunch of money into a lot of site plans and that can happen. We're a lot of returning fees. We, we're, we're trying to walk that, that line as best we can, which is why Scott, my show up here today. Try to communicate as best we can with it.
I will say, we're happy to be working with them. I know they're coming over from east side. You know, it is a lot of work and we do appreciate the look at it. You know, when I go back to the other conversation too, I know there's a lot of people, we'd love to see a department store there. It's just not happening. I don't think we have a whole lot of people knocking on the door to, to open up another one. So that was the other balance. It's sad empty. There is an interesting mix here and it is a lot of adaptive reuse. So there's a lot of information out there about malls, some mall anchor stores doing this, that schools going there. There's a lot of literature. This is not the first one. And so it is an interesting concept. This is a private school. This is overall, that's kind of been the balance that we've, we've struck and, and love to get them into a site as well at the same time. So.
So the Macy's, whatever we want to call it, their corporation is all on board with this and this is all.
They don't do, yeah, it's a different owner.
Whoever that, yeah, entity is, you know, last thing you want is to rezone everything. It's not even saleable if you go through it. It's not.
Their preference was to have, part of our purchase agreement is to get all this stuff rezoned to get to closing. Where I have that provisionally rezoned, and then they also want to maintain it as a B two slash education rather than flipping it entirely into education with, with all of that flexibility and then the mall felt better about that. If something fell through, they can still operate as if it was a department store. They could sell it to somebody else if our deal fell through and the whole thing didn't get rezoned. So they're aware of it. They're on.
Okay. Anybody else got anything before I close the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Iker.
I'll move approval with approval of the staff recommendation with the addition of a buffer C, non-site obscuring fence. And six foot, I think that.
Yes, but I don't mind you putting it in there.
I'll second.
Yeah, let's second it and then we'll have a stretch. Sure. Thank you, Mr. L. Second.
Mr. Budkey? Yeah, so buffer yard, usually talking about lot lanes. So here we've got all along the south. Lot lane is essentially a private ring road. I assume that's not what we're talking about.
I would be thinking more that, I would be more concerned that the fence follow the south side of the athletic field, the playground than the south side of the.
Like the green space almost wrapping around the green space. Yeah.
We understand. So we wouldn't, as we get to this area down here, we probably wouldn't bring fence all the way down to here. But wherever that playground actually fits, we would probably bring that. That would be probably what my initial thought.
And the sports field.
Yes, and the sports field, yeah.
Yeah, cause like right now it looks like the, the playground goes all the way down to the ring road, whereas you may just stop that playground right where your looks like.
Well, they might have that expense by the looks of it.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever, just as long as it's the, the playground space, I think that makes sense.
The one other piece I'd heard and, you know, that they're not intending to free flow out into the mall that there will be security. The only caveat I want to put in that there may be a building code requirement for a crash bar. We'll work with them if, if that is a requirement, but there wouldn't be somebody who could open up from the mall, because I know that's not a exit that way, but we would work with that and we haven't got that far into with building code, but there may be a requirement for a crash bar potentially.
Ryan, does, does the entrance on the right? It looks like coming in from the thirty-second street. If you're taking, you'd have to take a left and a right or, or can we make it so it's just a left straight in there? Or, you know, just sort of curving. It looks like it's sort of, you'd have to turn and then turn.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We'll, we'll evaluate that.
Okay.
It's hard to tell here, but I think you, you might be right.
And I, but I, but I think the other traffic stops before that road.
Correct.
You know, I think you have the east traffic.
I think that was the intention here, but it's kind of hard to tell with your photo.
And I, if I got rid of some of that center area, we might do.
If we could turn that.
Straighten that in. Round the boat. Actually, that'd be really good spot.
It is such a discombobulated.
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor. I think the motion, yeah, I don't think we adjusted anything with the fence. We're good. Mr. Really, any question? And Mr. Budkey, good with what the motion and second is? Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, we'll call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. I think here. Get your school. All right, three, two.
Ordinance and then zoning now, rezoning in twenty seven five, three, Hartland Drive, two, Hartland West.
Mr. Brooks.
Okay, it's really hard for me not to be showing maps. So I, just so you know, it's my nature now, but.
What happened to Alex and my screens? I've donated all their salaries to.
So when we get into the new spot, they'll be there. So this is the off ramp to, onto thirty-second for South Palm. We're right along that stretch. Here's Hartland Condos. We're looking at the two lots here. We have a owner looking at developing these and he's looking to add contractors' offices as an option. We had the one area as well that was going to be a slight reduction in that building setback in that one corner. Other than that, we have received calls. They've been supportive. They were mostly trying to understand the location. It's hard to tell that there's two, two lots there, you know, if you just drive by. But it's been most of the other folks that are up here because they own those individually. So we feel that I want to say probably potentially ten calls, just with folks asking and nobody, nobody had any concerns. It's the same thing that's allowed up here already. So from that perspective, staff is recommending approval of this a public hearing. And Nick's here, but he's really just, they had certain questions, he's the civil on this one.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Brooks before we open the public? Not seeing any open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up and address item three, two, do so at this time? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Iker. Second, moved by Mr. Iker, second by Mr. Coon. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side. Three, two tasks. Three, three. Yes, sir.
Should probably review my phone.
You are busy. Do we have a second? Mr. Budkey, all those in favor of. We have a second, Mr. Buckey, all those in favor of recusing Mr. Mattson, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're accused, thank you.
Thanks Ben, I appreciate that, I forgot all about, so.
This is open to recuse myself in this way.
This is a simple, a simple lot combination, they're in two different flats now. We've done lots of these, but it, it's just a requirement to go through. It's planning for a future expansion there, so with that, we're recommending approval, so. Not a whole lot going on there, we have contacted DOT as well and I know the folks working on it will contact us as well.
So any questions for Mr. Brooks, there's a public hearing, so Mr. Buckey?
Yeah, I, I thought at the. Aerial photo I wrote, it looks like eighteen oh one, lot number eighteen oh one is being used for access to the Speedway and does this change that?
That was my question, Mr. Buckey.
Or if there's like a grander plan, a long-term plan for access.
It almost cuts off the entrance when I looked.
So, yeah, I think the entrance is still going to be there, so they weren't moving that current entrance. I don't know what else they're going to work with them in terms of access, but there is other sites ways in. But remember to the county fair, the Speedway area, that's all county as well, so. They're all working, so I know if they move them, if it's a requirement, they'll move them to an appropriate spot that'll still have access. There is another, I know there's another spot too down here on the south side that can get there. But I, I don't know the future plans, if there is a change that they have perceived. I think I should just let them do this one.
The intention is for the access from the facility. The current route running north and everything for the Speedway for the fair, everything's going to have to come in either by Titan or off a gateway.
You know, so someday that'll shut down.
Well, they're, they are not going to want general public traffic.
Through the jail.
Through the jail lot, through the drop off, that'll be.
It's the pit access for the big trucks and cars.
They come through the south.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing, anybody in the audience like to step up and address item three, three, do so at this time? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Richter?
Second.
Move by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. L, any further discussions? Seeing none, call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side. Unanimously passes. Communications and preliminary approvals. Item four one.
Vacation of evening is lot twenty-five, the latest edition located at thirteen sixty South Washington Street.
Mr. Brooks, yeah, this is the former Holiday Gas Station and Sierra's been working on this one, the Holiday Gas Station. Future Holiday Gas Station site, former ID gas station. All right, we know it's. There was a former alley that ran through this area, it was vacated, the right of way for the alley. They retained the north half of that for easement, there's still some overhead power there and likely some mid continent cable probably too on that. They are working with XL, we have seen some preliminary indications of that. We are recommending this move forward and it's a, about a six week process in terms of running through these. Easyment vacations or open up the site plan approved here shortly, so we're, they've moved. We have, we're pretty far along on the site plan as well, so.
Are they going to use this whole?
Whole site, yeah, they will, yeah, but it'll be all a holiday, I don't think there's any other attachment done at all.
Okay, there's no public hearing on this one, preliminary?
Nope, this is the only time you'll see it because it's a vacation. These only go through planning and zone, Mr. Richter?
I'll move approval, but I'll just ask, does it make any sense to move it to one end of the lot or?
To move.
The easement.
Oh, right now, right now they're looking at utilizing the right of ways, I understand it, so I'm not hearing.
The, no, the easement doesn't make sense to, instead of vacating it, to move it like to the north end of the lot or itself, and you want to keep the easement.
I think what I'm hearing right now though is that.
They don't need it.
They, I think they think that they can utilize, they're not looking at that right now. If, if they do, they could work on a private utility easement, but the XL, they're going to have to work that out with XL, but I think they're going to be in the right way. That's my understanding.
But there is, yeah, is there, move by Mr. Richter, go have a second, second by Mr. Mattson. Any further discussion opened up, Mr. Buckey?
In the staff department, it's a wastewater sanitary sewer line, so what's the process like for, for that?
So the city does not need that any, anymore and hasn't for quite a while, it was a. An old sanitary sewer, I think it became a lead is what, or lead into the, into the location there. City was good with it moving and, and we've abandoned it from a public standpoint already. Okay, and it'll be removed as part of the, the update. And I think their sanitary connections, as I understand it, will come off of the west already and that's kind of where building's going to be. Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side. Item four passes. Reports from planning department, Mr. Brooks.
So we talked last time about some bills that were going through the legislature, you guys said they want to be updated. There is one not conforming lot bill that's kind of made its way through previous years. It's, it looks pretty inclusive, basically what, what they're saying is any lot that's out there existing. And as long as there's a structure on it, there's, there's some pieces on to it, we can send this to everybody, but essentially if that burns down, whatever, they can rebuild on the site. Even if it's below our standards in terms of lot size, so. I think the, the intent is to not harm anybody who has a lot and is able to sell it. That's really what it comes down to. The likely fact is some of these small, small lots never get rebuilt on, it's just too expensive to, to do, so. But I think the legislature's looking to try to. Allow somebody to sell their property, otherwise they become kind of this difficult to sell. Nobody can buy a lot unless they can get that, that mortgage insurance on it, so. That's one of the pieces, that's one bill, there's a couple others, but they, I don't think they're going to affect us a lot, they're a little bit more on the county side. But I just, I think the last time you guys had asked to be kind of updated on some of the things we were tracking. The other thing is we did work with the, the pet piece, we did have our, our meeting, I'd say the meeting went fairly well. Pete and, and Andrew were both there, Frank was there as well. We do have some preliminary minutes, there's probably some final things that we're, maybe get together one more time. We're going to send out some information to them, but if you guys had anything you wanted to add on that, not a whole lot of information yet, but. I'd say the meeting went well, I think we met for about an hour. And there'll probably be some ma- minor changes, I'll say, definitions will probably be looked at, brought back. And then maybe some potential changes on some of the conditional use requirements is kind of what I, what I would say it felt to, so.
Anything else on this?
Other business? Sierra was able to make it today as well, she's not always been able to make it, but come June, she'll be here much more often after she's done with the school and so. Perfect, welcome. Any other business?
What's that, can I get a motion to the? Record, second, Mr. Buckey, that's fine, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Meeting adjourned.